I'm going to open the June 2nd, 2015 Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the audience recording. And Don Mack is recording for LCAT and Robin McDonald's recording for the minutes. We're going to do some easy stuff first, we're just waiting on one gentleman, should be here any minute. Out of order, just for a couple of seconds. We'll do new business, let's do, um, request for waiver of site review plant, waiver of site plan review for Wayne Porter Home Improvements, Eight Linden Drive.
Sure. Request for waiver of site plan review, property owner is Wayne and Kathleen Portier, Eight Linden Avenue, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed here. Name proposed business is Wayne Portier Home Improvement. Owner of business is Wayne Portier. Business owner's address is Eight Linden Avenue, East Long Meadow. Property address is the same. Property district is commercial, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number of employees is one. Summary of business operation is home improvement business. Owner sale proprietor using home for office space only, no signage on vehicle, no clients will be at the residence, no materials stored on-site. The application's been signed and dated May 20th, 2015.
So basically a home office?
Home office.
Make a motion to approve the request.
So moved. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five zero.
Four zero, I wasn't here for the beginning.
Four zero, I'm sorry. Ralph wasn't here, easier now.
I know.
It was still unanimous.
Yes, it was.
Let's go to our room.
Okay, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Ellie Belcher.
Special permit for Ellie Belcher, 227 Shaker Road.
The, uh, East Long Meadow Planning Board Public Hearing, East Long Meadow Planning Board will hold a public hearing in June 2nd, 2015, at 6:00 Town Hall Meeting Room, 60 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, for a special permit application with regard to the existing special permit for the construction of a convenience store and gas station at 227 Shaker Road, submitted by Leonard Belcher. The hearing is to address the request for a new permit under new owner's name. The project will remain the same with no changes other than the ownership. That's it.
Does it state the new order?
It does not.
Ellie Belcher. Jim Shields is here to represent them.
The name change, everything stays the same?
Should we invite him up?
Certainly.
Yeah.
I guess. It'll be quick.
My name is Jim Shields for the record, and I'm here representing Leonard E. Belcher Incorporated. Also with me is Dave Ryan, who is the Vice President of Belcher. You may recall, almost exactly a year ago, a special permit and site plan review process was concluded for the property at the corner of Shaker and Chestnut, for a convenience store and service station, or gasoline dispensing station. Shortly after the permit was issued, the property was transferred by the then-owner, Chalmers Enterprises, to Belcher. Belcher was part and parcel of the entire application process. In fact, Belcher is referenced several times in both the site plan review approval and the special permit. But, for a number of reasons, there was a delay in Belcher commencing construction that went beyond the nine months that the zoning bylaw speaks to, and also, the zoning bylaw also requires this process to be undertaken if there's a transfer of ownership without substantial construction having occurred. And substantial construction had not taken place at the time of the transfer. I have with me for the record copies, multiple copies of both the deed from Chalmers to Belcher and the assignment of all of the permits, to the extent they are signable, by Chalmers to Belcher. And what Belcher, the sole purpose for this procedure is to comply with the zoning bylaw in terms of having the special permit actually issued in Belcher's name. There is no change whatsoever to any of the components of the approval process or the plans. And Belcher does intend to undertake construction soon. There have been some delays as they negotiated with both the supplier of gasoline and also with potential third-party tenants to do co-brand within the store. So, again, there's nothing different from anything that was previously approved by this board, and we would respectfully request that the permit be transferred and issued in Belcher's name.
I have no issues with it, I think it makes perfect sense. I think you guys have done everything they need to do.
Just a question through the chair. There's a timeframe, does that restart with the new issuance?
Yes.
On the special permit?
Oh yeah, I believe you mean in terms of appeal process and everything else?
Exactly.
And the six months to start construction.
Right.
Okay. And as a special permit, this is a special permit hearing, which is also a public hearing?
Yes.
So, we do need to open it up to the public for any input? Correct?
Any other questions coming up?
I had some talk of reconfiguring the structure.
There was some talk early on because of the, one of the co-brand entities that Belcher was dealing with was, their internal layout could have required an external stairway, which was not part of the original plan. As of right now, that is not in the cards. So, there's no, and we recognize that, should that change, and there is to be any change to the footprint whatsoever, that we would need to get the approval for that as well.
Another question.
Okay, now let me think this through for a minute. Belcher, or Chalmers was the original applicant?
Yes.
But Chalmers is no longer involved now with Belcher because they sold the property to Belcher.
Correct.
So, it's just, nothing but a name change?
Correct.
Entity change?
Entity change, it's a different entity.
Right.
But yes, that's where Chalmers no longer has any role or interest in the property.
Footprint's the same, site plan is the same. Everything else is the same. Just a name change. I'd like to open it up to the public. Any comments, anyone? Mayor?
No, all set.
All set?
All set.
Like to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to take it back to the board first, and then...
Take it back to the board, anybody have any further comments?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I've got a motion to issue the special permit to Leonard Belcher.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just make one question? Did you want it Leonard Belcher or L.E. Belcher?
The legal name of the entity is Leonard E. Belcher Incorporated.
Guess that's it, right? Motion passes, five zero.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Who submitted that motion?
Michael did.
Michael did.
I just have a quick question, even though it's outside of, you're outside. When do you plan to start in construction?
We have to get the engineering completed, and this is one of the things we're waiting for. So, I've got to get the engineering done until, I hope, by the end of the summer.
So, you have an operator and everything, you're going to be the operator?
We're going to be the operator. Taking a lot longer than we thought to get this done.
Yeah. A lot of people have asked. All right, good night. You might want to do the A&R, since Mr. Roby is here.
Okay, let's do that. We're going to skip around, we'll go to the A&R, 169 West Wood Avenue. You can come up if you want. Or you can stay.
It's going to be hard.
Am I reading anything?
No.
Okay.
Well, you can if you want.
I don't really want to. Well, I will. I'm a good employee of the town.
I know.
Throw my eyesight off every time.
This would be nothing to read. It's just...
Are you familiar with it?
Yep.
You might want him to tell you exactly what he's going to do.
Yeah, just give us the basics of what we're going to do and who we are.
I'm going to sell it, that's what I'm going to do.
That simple.
All right.
I'm a real estate broker, helping the folks who own the property just maximize the value. That's all I'm doing.
Okay.
So, we have...
A&R, changing the, let me see here.
They're dividing the property.
Dividing the property into, we have sufficient frontage on both lots.
And sufficient frontage.
Yes.
On Smith...
Lot B has Smith Avenue.
And Westwood.
And Lot A still has Westwood.
Right.
By far.
So, we have frontage, we have access.
That's it.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve A&R, as presented.
Endorse.
Endorse, I'm sorry, thank you.
I would second that motion to endorse it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm just getting nervous.
You had good reason to be nervous, but you slid underneath the wire.
Robin, thank you for all your...
Sorry.
And your sidekick.
Oh, yeah.
We'll see.
There is a...
Oh, we've got to sign these, right?
Yep.
Send them later?
At the end.
If you want.
Yeah.
Let's just not forget, okay?
I won't. It's right in front of me.
All right.
Okay. That's done. Want to do 6:15, continue?
Uh, you can, yep. And I have a...
Oh, it's not 16, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
No, it's not.
We've got a couple of minutes.
We've got a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Let's do, um...
Kiducation, right?
What's that one?
Request for waiver of site plan clothing bin.
Oh, yeah, let's do that one. That's what it's called, Kiducation? Okay.
From Kiducation, signed by Zach Madison, Eastern District Regional Manager, to whom it may concern dated May 21st. Please allow this correspondence to serve as formal expression of our appreciation... appreciation. The town of East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, for allowing Community Crusade for Children in partnership with D-A-R-E to recycle in your town. Community Crusade for Children, Inc., will be responsible for the cleanliness, upkeep, and serving of our clothing bin container located at 54 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Mass. If the appearance of the bin does not meet your expectations in any way, we agree to remove the bin properly. Signed by, sincerely, Zach Madison.
And we have contact information for him? There's a phone number and all that kind of thing?
I think that was our concern at the last meeting.
Yeah.
It's a part of the state police...
You weren't here for this one, tied down.
Right.
So, basically, they're doing...
Neither was I.
A drop-off type of deal, like a goodwill thing. But a lot of times, people overflow.
Yeah, they're a mess, they're always a mess.
So, we wanted a contact number we could get in touch with in order to keep that thing nice and clean and decent.
So, are we the ones that are supposed to manage this thing? As far as cleanliness?
I think Walgreens will...
I think they'll...
Walgreens will. And it's only going to be there for a short period of time?
Yeah, six months, I think it was.
It's under dare.
Yeah, six months.
The state police are...
So, it's not permanent?
No.
No.
Through the chair? I will say, I know Long Meadow, Armadas parking lot has two of these. I maintain, in the winter, the plowing and all, and both of these boxes are taken care of immaculate. There is never any overflow on either of them. They actually send someone up to hand shovel in front of them, so that they're still full access and all into it.
Same brand?
It's the same brand, which I didn't realize until we just said Kiducation. I'm very impressed with how they maintain them in Long Meadow.
Cool.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for waiver of site plan for this.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion?
I'm satisfied, I just wondered if they brought up the question last time, and I'm satisfied with the answer, so.
Yep, we got contact information, everything looks good. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five zero.
6:15.
We've got 6:15? 6:16. Continuation of public hearing, Great Woods.
Yes, they have requested, they've met with the DPW. There's some changes on the plan that need to be made. And Rick Granger emailed me, and they would like to continue the hearing until August 11th. And this will give them plenty of time to make the revisions. Well, Chuck Dauci, who's the environmental engineer, his daughter's expecting her first child, so he wants to keep the next couple of weeks open, and he needs some time. And Rick Granger was going on vacation, so if you can continue it till August 11th at 6:00.
Can you make a note to them, just to make sure they figure out who owns the retention basin?
Absolutely.
Because that was my main...
Excuse me, I met with Rick before, after you and I spoke, and he said, yes, the new plans will show that it's attached to each individual lot.
That was my main concern, because we can't, albeit you can split up that retention basin, okay, we're going to clean this section, we're going to, I think one person should be responsible for the whole thing. Okay.
I would make a motion then to continue to August 11th at 6:00.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll fly right through this. Let's do signage for friendlies?
We're going to be sitting around for a half hour, waiting for 6:45.
Oh, no, you won't.
We got, we got, did you see this top permit's over here? Ralph Page to speak.
They're not coming in?
No.
Okay.
I don't anticipate, uh, they're still...
Yeah, I somehow missed that. We're going to need some more time. Will we be done by midnight?
I don't know.
Ralph might know.
We're going to earn 20 hours in tonight.
We're going to earn our paycheck tonight.
We love you, Ralph.
I heard.
They heard it too.
This is from the Science Center, Town of East Long Meadow, Attention Planning Board, regarding 562 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Attention Planning Board, thank you for your time in review of this project. This is a reapplication for this friendly's location. The change made is the omission of the cone logo in the main gable. This now meets the 100 square foot maximum requirements for business. The pylon has a visual sign face of 70 inches by 70 inches plus 34, I guess, plus 34 square feet. Sign 2 has a size of 38 square feet. Sign 3 has a size of 26.6 square feet. All three equal 98.6 square feet. enclosed are the following documents, signed permit application, art rendering photos, letters of authorization, workers' compensation insurance affidavit, and certificate of liability insurance. If there are any additional details, documents required, please let me know, and I'll be happy to provide in a timely manner. A permit fee of $80 for, for, for four. Original signed application was included in the original application, signed by Anne So, this is for the camera?
They're basically just replacing them.
So, it'll be basically the same size, yeah, it is the same size.
Everything's the same size.
Actually, a lot nicer than the other size.
Yes, it is.
Don, were you able to get it?
I'm going to hear about it.
Looks a lot better.
Yeah, I like it there in the rid. It was sharp.
Yeah, looks a lot cleaner here.
I don't like change. I'm never going to know where to go. You'll smell the food. You'll figure it out. Thank you, Robin.
So, it meets the requirements, I'll make a motion to approve the request for signage for friendlies at 562 North Main.
I will second that motion.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five zero.
And my agenda's in that package. Sorry about that.
Well, it's 6:21.
Yeah, I was just going to say Ralph is up.
Okay, just before I'll start through the chair, this, what you've got in front of you there is an update, it's the executive summary of the update on the Plan for Progress, which is the economic development plan for the Pioneer Valley that was developed by PVPC. And they handed this out at the Executive Committee meeting last week, and I thought you all ought to have some bedtime readings, so. It kind of summarizes what they're trying to get done economically in the valley. It doesn't have a whole lot of impact on our town, it's focused more on the gateway cities of Holyoke and Springfield, but, and Northampton, but it gives you an overall framework for what's happening in terms of economic development, so. Just to keep you informed. And if anyone's interested, this is available online at pvpc.org, and you can go there, it's a PDF, and read it or download it or whatever. Just trying to save some trees.
That's always a good idea.
Fragile infrastructure systems. I'm glad they show 91 on that.
Right.
They could have shown Elm Street.
Yeah, I think they could have shown a lot of it.
Yeah, the Great Woods is going to continue, I had no idea, you know, and I wanted to give you enough time.
No, but they sped things through pretty quickly, so.
You did. And now Ralph has 20 minutes.
Yeah, I can't help this all. He's got less than 20 minutes.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, it may be quick and easy. It's been brought to my attention that, actually, through looking at my last pay stub, that a set number of hours has been designated, at least to myself, on my pay stub. And that's happened without us turning in any hours. I find it, well, I personally find it offensive that someone else is telling me how many hours I work when they have no clue how many hours I put in. It would be my request to the board that we change our policy, and through our director, we submit to the town accountant, to the accountant's office, on a weekly basis, a time card from each of us stating how many hours we were on call, and how many hours we put in physically, what our hours are. I believe this board, at least myself, and I can't speak for the whole board, but I try and be on call at least every hour that our department is open. If something comes up, I try and be there. If I need to go look at something, if we need to talk to a member of town because there's a problem, anything. And for someone else to tell me how many hours I worked, I just, I disagree with it. I think the board should take the stand that we submit a time to them to let them know what we're actually working. I don't think this has ever been done in the past, but also, looking back over my pay stubs, this has just recently started, that they've added a number of hours to my stub that we're working.
Really? And what is that number?
It's 12.
That's interesting.
That is, yeah, I'm not clear, it's not clear to me how the salaries, if you will, for this board were set. It certainly happened long before I came on the board, and it's not in the, it's not in the general bylaws. So, I assume that it was set by town meeting at some point way back when, but I have no clue.
Ever since I've been here, if I may, Sandra?
Yes.
Included in the budget is a stipend of $4,200 for the planning board members. I was unaware of how it's dibbied up, so to speak. I know that the chairperson gets a larger amount, but I have no idea, and I think that the reason that this is being done is to, I don't want to say verify, but to show that a certain number of hours times a certain amount will equal whatever it is your check is. I think that's, that's what the system has done. In preparing our budget, I've put $4,200 flat. I have never put hours in, no one has ever asked me what hours any board member puts in. So, I don't know either.
Through the chair, I, I don't think that we were considered to be an hourly group.
No.
It's a set stipend for the job, if you will. And it's not by the hour, it's for the job.
Stipend, I think, is the key word.
Right. And if the accounting software changed so that they had to put something in to make it work, that's possible, but I would suggest that someone talk with the town accountant and understand why it was done that way, and who directed that it be done that way. Before we jumped to too many conclusions on it, I'd just like to know why it was there, and I'm sure she can tell us that, she's...
I think Ralph is...
I spoke with Sarah Menard, the town accountant, and she said she doesn't know when it was done or who directed them, but that the boards were directed at 12 hours a week. But yet, she couldn't give me any basis for that. She also said that the software program set a rate and set the hours. I find that extremely difficult to believe, because my rate is 3.0766, which is $3.07 an hour, times 12 hours, does not even equal the pay that's in my check. So, I'm not sure who's doing the math down there, I'm not sure who's directing them to tell me how many hours I'm supposed to work. But for two and a half, almost three years, actually, it was three years exactly, a set amount was put on the check, no rate, no hours, just a set amount, which basically was the stipend that we were to make. And now, all of a sudden, that the selectmen have taken a vote, as soon as that vote went in, hours went onto my paycheck.
That is interesting.
And I think, I honestly think that this board needs to start submitting our hours. Under 32B, it states any elected official, they may offer health insurance to elected officials who customarily work under 20 hours. I believe that is the reason for the 12 hours going onto my paycheck. But they've never come to us to ask how many hours we actually work. As a planning board, we're not under the board of selectmen, we are under the voters of this town. When I was voted in, there was absolutely nothing that stated how many hours I was to work. I was just to work until the job was done correctly. That's what I've always tried to do. And I think, as a board, we should be submitting our times, saying this is how many hours. I'm not asking for additional money, I'm asking for them to get it straight. If I put in 35 hours a week because I'm on call, and because I've gone to meetings, multiple meetings, it's not just this meeting that I'm on. As a member of the planning board, I'm also appointed to community preservation. Community preservation is required to have a member of the planning board. So, this is also time that we're spending, research time, looking at projects, reviewing them at home. I mean, we spend multiple hours that the general public just does not realize.
I'm just curious, are the selectmen getting 12 hours on their paycheck too?
I can only speak for myself.
I just don't know if it's like all across the board, school committee, everybody?
I can ask.
I'd be curious. Let's see if that's, if that's what's been, same card everybody's been dealt with. I would like to know the answer to that.
And if they are going to do it that way, I'd like to know if we're subject to minimum wage or not.
That was my, that was my question.
I personally think I'm worth prevailing wage. Maybe more.
And sick time. Don't forget that, January, July 1st. Any comments?
I did talk to, again, the accountant, and she said that if the board so chose to submit hours, they would find a way, it would create more work for the accounting department, but they would create a way to accept them and log them in on our checks.
Well, I could put them in on, I submit hours every week, you know, payroll every week, can just add the names on my McDonald's.
I mean...
I can meet with Sarah and find out how to do it if you want. I can meet with Sarah and find out how to do it if we want.
It's all worth it. Like I said, I'd like to know if it's been done across the board, if it's been, you know, just directed at us. I'd like to know all the answers to all those questions.
We thinking about something?
Yeah. I think keeping track of hours is gonna be a nuisance for everybody. And it's almost like it's a salary position, but yet, pay stub says it's an hourly position. It's gotta be one or the other.
It's really a stipend.
It's really a stipend.
It's a stipend, there is no, there's no set hour, hourly rate and there's no set, it's not even really a salary.
Thirty-two B too, you have, I can be that.
I do, actually.
I mean, you'd be amazed how many times all of us are out in public at a restaurant or grocery store someplace and someone will come up to you and say, hey, I understand that got approved, why did that get approved? What's, and you're sitting there for fifteen, twenty minutes, you know, at a whack, explaining why things are done the way they're done per zoning.
Well, don't, don't get me started on how many hours I put on, at PVPC as your representative and representative of the town.
Right.
From the planning board. Okay, you know, I, I attend at least one meeting a month downtown for two hours. And a general meeting four times a year. And this week I'm going down to meet with them because we have some accounting issues that we need to deal with and, you know. So, yeah, you know.
Cause you serve on several boards, I serve on several boards.
Oh, yeah.
I'll serve on several boards.
So, they can't say it's a software issue.
It's thirty-two B.
Yeah.
And actually, if you take my rate, which is sixty-six dollars a month and you divide that by the rate that they're paying me, three dollars and seven cents an hour, it comes out to twenty-one point six six hours that I'm employed. Not the twelve that they have listed, so.
These numbers don't even come close.
Their rate and their hours do not even come close to what they're paying me. I mean.
The computer can't multiply.
I'm looking to retire on that sixty-six dollars.
You're talking about being called a part-time employee?
As an employee under thirty-two B, as an elected official, it states that the town may offer you, anyone that works under twenty hours as an elected official, they may offer it to you. Which means that they don't have to offer it. But the twenty hours is the cutoff. If you're typically working over twenty hours, they have to offer it to you, you're under thirty-two B. Which the Board of Selectmen said that they've adopted.
Yes, what's that all about?
I don't know, creative accounting? I think the mob will do that.
Ralph, you get paid more than I do.
Seniority has its perks here. Thirty-eight cents is all it is.
That.
How much difference?
Yeah, it's the same.
About twelve dollars.
No.
Yeah, I'm fifty-four, he's sixty-six.
No, that's, that's, that's before taxes.
Where's, where's the net?
The zero.
The zero.
The zero, that's the net.
He gets to take it out, he gets to take it out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, he's right, he's right, that, that's right, the numbers are right. It's just these numbers don't add up, the creative accounting.
Yeah, yo, that doesn't, that doesn't add up at all.
Sandra's the one that gets the big bucks this time.
I think it's the next to the mayor out there, retire.
Well, I brought this up for the board, basically, to, to think about submitting our hours. And I was hoping by the next meeting, after we think about it, that we could, we could vote on whether or not that would be something we wanted to do. The only way to customarily show that we are exceeding a twenty-hour work week is to actually submit our hours.
Why don't we get an explanation here in this, one of our meetings, how exactly this has worked? And then we can decide. What do you think, Ralph?
And where would the explanation come from, the town accountant?
It's either gotta come from him, which is gonna come from whoever gave him the, the information.
Her.
Her.
Her, that's right, Sarah. I'm thinking Tom Florence.
Yeah, she's getting it from the-
He's the clerk.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have an executive secretary at this point?
No.
No.
We do not?
No.
Okay.
And if we do something like that and we're talking personal stuff, should we do it in the executive session?
Yes.
It's contractual.
It would be negotiations, if that's what you're, I'll, I'll have to check with Jim Donahue cause there's only certain, certain things. But even if we do get a new administrator to replace Nick, they won't be of any help to you. Nick is gone, Nick is gone.
No, but I think that our town accountant should be able to explain the immediate change that has just taken place.
I can ask Sarah to come if you'd like.
That would be my wish.
Yeah, I think we should do that, yeah.
And would that be, to be done in the executive session, if so needed?
Uh, I will talk to Jim and see if it needs it.
Thank you. That's what I had for now. Do you guys wanna do the minutes?
Let's.
All right, I have the-
Minutes of April twenty-first.
Yes.
Two thousand fifteen.
Would you care to pass those down? Those are my highlighted areas where corrections may possibly be needed.
For the twenty-first?
Around the twenty-first.
This is for all three of them. I sent Donna back one for the nineteenth.
Yep, I saw it out.
I took care of the twenty-first. I didn't send her the corrections via email. I actually printed them out, cause I was driving.
She, and you printed them out while you were driving?
Well, no, I was heading somewhere, so I printed them so that I could review.
She made your changes on the nineteenth and resent them to you.
Yes, those changes were fine for May nineteenth.
So, the nineteenth is good, but the twenty-first and the fifth, they're not?
Yes, I have changes on both of those.
All right, so.
Including-
So, we can't vote on the twenty-first or the fifth?
No, but the nineteenth we can.
We can vote on the nineteenth. Did everybody get a chance to look at the nineteenth?
Yeah, I, I have no problems with Ralph's corrections.
I'm good with Ralph's corrections.
I would then make a motion to approve the minutes of May nineteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I had, what I did is I highlighted for the areas, because on the next one, you'll see that we had reorganized.
Oh, all right.
We reorganized and she didn't-
Lee Street is not, um, structure.
Yeah, if you read through it, you can-
S T R U C T U R E.
No, if you just read the highlighted area, you can see some areas just don't make sense, it's not-
It says structure, all right, let me see. I'll, I'll look through.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so wait till next meeting for the-
It would be the, what night is that?
April twenty-first.
Oh, my, yeah, you weren't here.
Yeah.
Michael, you need to sign that.
You need to help me out, buddy. Again.
So, May nineteenth is done. My corrections are in for those, so the next meeting we can hopefully prove them.
Who did the motion on that?
I did.
And who did the second?
George.
Thank you.
We still have time?
Yeah, you got some other stuff for us?
It never ends. We did have definitions. We were unable to meet all the different definitions that the zoning review committee had given to us. So, should we attempt to reschedule them to come in?
The zoning committee, yeah, I think, yes, Marilyn is feeling better.
Great.
So, that'll be perfect.
Cause I was going through all my highlighted areas, it's wonderful. In my spare time, when I have nothing to do, I choose to do planning board stuff.
Wanna follow the Bible next, Ralph? Check that over.
That's something.
Do you wanna take, do you wanna take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, we can take a five-minute recess.
Motion to adjourn for five minutes? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I need a-
Okay.
Okay.
We're back to reconvene, the June second, two thousand fifteen meeting, planning board.
Uh, the planning board of Town of East Long Meadow will hold a public hearing on June second, twenty fifteen, at six forty-five in the hearing room at the Town Hall, sixty Center Square, for a special permit application in regards to an existing special permit for the Congregate Care Living Facility at one Apple Blossom Lane. The hearing is to address the request for a new permit under the new owner's name. The project is constructed and the use will remain the same. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
And like I said before, this is the Congregate Living Facility on Parker Street and they just sold the facility? Same thing as you just went through?
Same exact thing, ma'am.
Exact same thing.
So, it's a public hearing, open it up. Have they changed, have they changed the operator as well?
I'm sorry?
The operator?
No.
They, they were part of a network?
Yes, no.
That, that's the same?
Yes.
So, just the-
Right now.
The physical owner of the-
Correct.
Property.
Right, mm-hmm.
Before I open it up?
Not for me.
I'll open it up to the public, any comments on Congregate Living on one at Blossom Lane?
Bob Adams, Red and Drive, are you talking to Bluebird Estates on the left?
Yes.
One Blossom Lane, that whole thing?
Yes.
And what about across the street?
No, totally different.
Totally different.
That's totally different corporation?
Yes.
Okay, cause I got a condo up there, all right, okay.
What I figured, second floor, second floor, right?
Third. Yep. I'm gonna fix income.
Oh, my.
Roof, rooftop.
You're retired.
Rooftop.
Fix income.
So am I, Bob.
I'll never retire. Okay, close it to the public?
To bring it back to the board?
I'll bring it back to the board.
Who is, who is the new owner? Did we say that?
Brian Landrum.
We should read it to the record so that it's, people know who it is.
Brian Landrum, SNR twenty-four, Bluebird Estates LLC.
Let me read the whole application?
No.
Okay, uh, the applicant is Brian Landrum, so he would be the new owner. And the address in the LLC that he's gonna put this in is NR, excuse me, SNR twenty-four Bluebird Estates Owner LLC Property.
And this.
And then five eight eight five Meadows Road, Suite five hundred, Lake Oswego, Oregon. There's a zip code and a phone number listed here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the change in ownership for Apple Blossom Congregate Living.
And issue the new special permit?
And issue the new special permit.
And issue the new special permit.
And I will second that.
Any other comments?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Robin?
That is it, we have addressed everything.
Ralph, anything?
I think I had my say tonight, thank you.
You sure?
I'm sure, I look forwards to our next meeting. Me too.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.